...from earlier this morning in Redwood City is now reconvened in Happren Bay this evening. We are now going to be taking up item number 10, which is a study session on the California Coastal Commission staff’s recommendation on the MidCoast Update Local Coastal Program amendments. And I do want to mention that the Board felt that it was important to hold this meeting in the evening on the coast to make it as convenient as possible for those residents who are most impacted by the LCP to provide their input. I do, we are going to first have a presentation from Lisa Groth and then I will be calling on speakers. If you would like to speak on this item, please complete a speaker slip and provide it to the clerk of the Board. And all speakers are allotted two minutes. And if a previous speaker has, in your view, sufficiently covered an item that you agree with, don’t feel that you have to speak. We certainly welcome your input, but we do want to keep the comments limited to two minutes and keep it as relevant as possible. I have been asked to mention that tonight’s meeting will be cable cast on MCTV Channel 6 on Thursday, June 18 at 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. And it will also be available on demand at MCTV.com. And with that, I’d like to ask Ms. Groth to come forward and provide a presentation.
Thank you, President Church, Board members, and executive staff. I just wanted to make a few brief overview comments before I give the presentation and the substance of the presentation to Steve Monowitz, our long-range planning manager, who has really been heading the effort on the MidCoast Local Coastal Program update. As many of you are aware, the county began its update process for the MidCoast LCP in mid-1999. We submitted the application for the update in February of 2007, and at the Board’s direction and request, we did meet numerous times with the Coastal Commission staff to provide them additional information to supplement that application between February 2007 and February 2009 this year, when the proposed modifications from the Coastal Commission staff were issued. We are recommending that we continue to meet with the Coastal Commission staff. They have been very beneficial meetings. They have helped us identify areas of agreement, as well as areas that require some further conversation and discussion. So we would be recommending that we continue those discussions through August of this year, when the Coastal Commission is slated to take final action on the update application. Tonight is a study session. It’s the first of two opportunities for the Board and members of the public to review and comment on the proposed Coastal Commission staff modifications. No action is required tonight. A formal recommendation from the Board of Supervisors to the Coastal Commission is anticipated on July 7 at a Board meeting. Those formal recommendations would then be forwarded to the Coastal Commission for its consideration and action at the August 11th or 12th, 13th meeting. The exact date will be determined towards the end of July or early August, as they set their agenda. At that time, when the Coastal Commission takes action, the Board of Supervisors then has six months to determine whether or not it would approve and adopt those actions and determinations, or not approve and adopt those actions. If you vote to approve those actions, then we would have an updated local coastal program for the MidCoast. If you elect not to approve those modifications, we will continue operating under the existing local coastal program. Charles Lester, who is the deputy director of the Coastal Commission staff, is here to address another option which entails a resubmital, which is a possibility should the Board decide to do that after the Coastal Commission takes its action in August of this year. So he can speak to that a little bit in more detail. At this point, I would like to hand over the presentation for the substance of the presentation to Steve Monowitz, our long-range planning manager. He has prepared some materials for you, most notably a chart that will help frame the discussion tonight, should you choose to use that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Honorable Supervisors, and Executive Staff. As you know, the Coastal Act is founded on the principle of a partnership between the local government and the state in carrying out its objectives. And in the spirit of that partnership, we’ve been working very closely with Commission staff to resolve some differences in how we think the MidCoast update should be tailored to best accomplish Coastal Act objectives. And I want to emphasize that these differences are not with respect to Coastal Act policies themselves, it’s rather in how they can be effectively implemented within the county’s framework for planning and development review. So tonight’s study session provides an important opportunity for us to discuss how to best resolve these differences, and to do so in a way that respects the local process. As Lisa mentioned, over six years were spent at the local level deciding on the content of the MidCoast update, and we felt it was only appropriate that the folks who participated in the development of the update had the opportunity to fully understand and respond to some of the significant changes that are being recommended by the Commission staff. So before I get into the details of the issues raised by the Commission staff’s recommendations, I just wanted to briefly mention some of the improvements, the beneficial changes that are included in the amendments as adopted by the county. In addition to updating the estimated total amount of development allowed by the LCP, which is otherwise referred to as build-out, the update includes some improvements, significant improvements in policies regarding areas of open space preservation, coastal access and recreation, affordable housing, water quality protection, design review, and balancing growth with public services, among other ways, by reducing what the current limit on the number of residential units allowed per year, which is now set at 125 units per year by our existing LCP, to 75 units per year. The Commission staff is suggesting a lowering in that, and we’ll talk about that in more detail soon. I also wanted to briefly provide you with an overview of the Commission staff’s recommendation, which includes over 60 modifications to the amendments approved by the county. In our analysis of these modifications, we’ve identified 19 issue areas of concern, and in order to address these concerns, we released a preliminary recommendation that requests the Commission staff to either revise or delete approximately 30 of their modifications. With respect to the remainder of the modifications, they appear to be acceptable to county staff, and I say that with the caveat that we’d like to hear from the Board and the public to see if there are any other issue areas of concern that we need to address in our response. So what about the outstanding issue areas? I’m pleased to say that recent meetings, in recent meetings with Commission staff, they’ve indicated their intent to accept at least two of those recommendations. One has to do with revising the approach to water quality protection to be more consistent with the approach being implemented countywide through our storm, water pollution prevention program. They’ve also agreed to revise the unit of measurement that’s applied to our growth limit. The county proposed to use number of residential units as that unit of measurement. They had suggested changing that to a percent of population growth. They’ve agreed to go back to the method proposed by the county staff, although there’s still disagreement on what that number should be. So let’s jump into that issue. I’ll call that issue number one, and this has to do with modification two, which is described on page one of the summary table. So as I mentioned in its submittal to the Commission, the county proposed to reduce the existing growth rate from 125 residential units per year to 75. The Commission staff proposes reducing this to 39 units per year, which is equivalent to an estimated 1% growth rate. Their request to make this change is based on a concern about the adequacy of public services. I think it’s important to note that the concern about the adequacy of public services is distinct from a concern that’s based on direct impacts to coastal resources such as habitats or views. Both the existing LCP and the proposed update are intended to accommodate infill development within an urban area in order to meet the needs of county residents and visitors while protecting coastal resources such as the scenic and open space and agricultural resources of the surrounding rural area. With respect to the Commission staff’s concern that build-out will adversely affect coastal access and recreation, we question their assumption that infill development will have a significant impact. Traffic on the coast during the weekends and other peak recreation times is really a regional issue that’s not going to be solved by a lower growth rate. Similarly, lowering the growth rate will not help provide solutions to public service needs because it will diminish the contributions that new development makes to addressing these needs. These contributions are in the form of fees that are used to fund roadway improvements, park and recreation facilities, and stormwater programs, as well as through the actual installation of infrastructure and public amenities in conjunction with development. Our concern about the impact of a lower growth rate on the provision of infrastructure and service improvements is compounded by the Commission staff’s proposed policies requiring the demonstration of adequate public services. These proposals appear to render the growth rate moot by precluding any amount of additional growth until certain service improvements are made. For example, the Commission staff has set a threshold for adequate circulation that’s already being exceeded, which would seem to imply that no new development could take place until peak commuter traffic issues are effectively resolved. While it’s important to consider the role of new development in providing infrastructure and service improvements, I want to point out that the county is not relying entirely on new development to make these improvements. There are a number of county projects and planning efforts underway that will help address transportation and service issues of concern. These include the update of the countywide transportation plan, as well as various trail improvement and planning efforts that are specific to the urban MidCoast. In summary, the county is taking the initiative to plan for the necessary improvements, but will need some assistance from new development in order to bring these plans into reality. We’re therefore recommending that the Commission staff revise its recommendation to retain the county-proposed 75-unit-per-year limit, and to also exempt second dwelling units from this quota, because we feel that they provide an important way of meeting the county’s affordable housing needs. With respect to issue number two, that has to do with the demonstration of adequate services, which I briefly touched on and is implemented by modification six, which is addressed in the second row on page two of your table. Now, there’s no dispute that public service capacities are critical issues to be considered in the development review process. However, what we’re concerned about is the way in which the Commission staff’s proposed policies will be carried out. As previously mentioned, our primary concern is that Commission staff has already determined that existing roadway capacities and sewer collection facilities are inadequate, and that, as a result, it seems that no new development can be approved until these issues are resolved. We’re also concerned about the method and feasibility of addressing the requirement to demonstrate that water is available to serve not only a new project, a new development project, but all development that the service district has committed to serve. And we’re particularly concerned about the implication of this requirement on our ability to move forward with priority development, such as affordable housing, visitor-serving uses, and other coastal-dependent uses. To address these concerns, we’ve proposed that the Commission staff delete portions of modification six. As an alternative, it would be appropriate for them to consider alternative language that does a better job of balancing growth with the provision of public service improvements, rather than prohibiting growth until the service improvements are made. Let’s move on to issue number three, which has to do with prohibition of individual wells and septic systems, and this is also in regard to modification six, which prohibits private wells and septic systems within the urban area. County staff agrees that a cautious approach to wells and septic systems is warranted, particularly in light of the most recent study of MidCoast groundwater. However, we suggest that exceptions to this prohibition be allowed when it can be documented that wells or septic systems will not have a detrimental impact, and we’d suggest that the Commission staff revise its modification accordingly. Issue number four has to do with the limitations on the capacity of public works projects established by various mods, which are modifications, which are addressed on the top of page three of the summary table. Again, the difference in Commission and county staff’s perspective on this issue is not with the Coastal Act policy itself, but how it should be implemented. Rather than sizing public works to serve a level of development that can be accommodated consistent with the protection of coastal resources, the capacity limits recommended by Commission staff are based on the availability of other public services. Our concern with this approach is that it will impede, rather than facilitate, needed infrastructure and service improvements by essentially requiring that those public works projects all take place at the same time. For example, we’re concerned that unresolved water supply issues will preclude the implementation of a comprehensive solution to the traffic problems on the coast. At best, it seems that the Commission staff-recommended policy would only allow public works projects that are limited in capacity to serve existing development, which is not really an effective or efficient means of meeting the long-term needs of the MidCoast. We therefore suggest that the Commission staff either delete these modifications or revise them to allow public works to be sized to serve the amount of development allowed by the LCP, rather than an amount that can be served by other public services at this point in time. Issue number five has to do with priorities for affordable housing, which are affected by modification six, 23, and 43, and addressed in the middle column on page four of the summary table. There are really two issues of concern here. The Commission staff proposes deleting the county’s proposal to reserve additional water for 40 more affordable housing units, and they also propose to revise existing priorities for water service by giving Coastal Act land use priorities higher standing than affordable housing. Simply stated, these modifications are inconsistent with policies of the Coastal Act that encourage affordable housing in the coastal zone and should therefore be deleted. Issue number six has to do with new lot retirement requirements for land divisions called for by modification 38, which is described on the top of page six of the summary table. This modification requires all applicants for land divisions to locate and purchase other land within the MidCoast urban area that has equivalent development potential to that which will be created by the division, and then record legal documents over such lands that prohibit their future development. In addition to placing a significant new burden on applicants for land divisions, this modification raises issue about the long-term management of retired lots, a responsibility that would seem to fall on public agencies, private associations, or adjacent landowners. As described in the June 16, 2009 memorandum prepared by county council, recent court decisions on the Witt and Abernathy cases will affect the way in which the issue of parcel legality is addressed, and will likely require property owners to obtain conditional certificates of compliance or subdivisions to legalize their existing land holdings. This will significantly expand the application of the lot retirement requirements recommended by the Commission staff, seemingly beyond that which they originally intended. In light of these issues, which continue to be evaluated, we have preliminarily suggested that the requirements for lot retirement be revised so that they apply only to land divisions that create five or more new parcels, and that affordable housing projects be exempt from such a requirement. Issue number seven has to do with the rezoning of the Highway 1 bypass lands, which is addressed by modifications 55, 58, and 59, and described on page seven of the summary table. These modifications require the county to designate the Highway 1 bypass lands as a linear park and trail, rezone the area to community open space, and pursue funding to complete a linear park and trail within two years of amendment certification. In its submittal to the Coastal Commission, the county memorialized its interest in protecting open space and recreational resources of bypass lands by including a new policy that supports efforts to add the Devil’s Slide bypass lands into adjoining park units. The county has not, however, proposed to rezone these lands at this point in time due to the need to resolve several issues associated with such a rezoning. These include the need to evaluate Caltrans’ legal agreements with former landowners, address Caltrans’ interest in receiving appropriate compensation, and protecting any rights of access that, across these lands, to lots that are either within the bypass area or east of the bypass alignment. County staff is actively working with Caltrans to address these issues and facilitate park and open space uses. However, until these issues are resolved, it’s inappropriate to move forward with a rezoning. Another concern raised by the suggested modification related to bypass lands is the requirement that the county seek funding to complete a linear park and trail within the bypass area. And this is a good segue to the final issue that I’ll be addressing, issue number eight, which has to do with the full range of new studies and monitoring programs that are being required of the county by the Coastal Commission staff’s proposal. These include requirements to monitor the rate of residential development in relation to traffic levels during peak recreation periods, to commission a study that evaluates the cumulative impacts of build-out on traffic, and to pursue funding to conduct a trail alignment study. These modifications are scattered throughout the Commission staff reports, so there’s no particular line item on your summary chart for this. Our concern is not with the value of conducting the studies and the monitoring being recommended by the Commission staff, it’s really about how we can accomplish these within our limited resources and other priorities. In light of the need for the county to carefully apply its discretion to the programming of projects, particularly during these difficult financial times, we recommend that the modifications either be deleted or revised to eliminate them as mandatory requirements. In conclusion, I’d like to thank the Board for this opportunity to discuss the issues raised by the Commission staff, and note that both the Commission staff and county staff are available to answer any questions you might have. I’d like to take this opportunity to introduce the Coastal Commission staff members who are here, Deputy Director Charles Lester, and supervisor of the North Central Coast District, Ruby Papp. I’d also like to note that I do have maps available, should you find them useful to your discussion. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Monowitz. Any questions to the staff? Okay, thank you very much. In a minute, Mr. Lester, I will call on you to respond to that presentation, but first I’m going to call out the boarder, Jack Olson, who is, has to leave. Good evening, Jack.
Good evening, President Church, Honorable members of the Board, Jack Olson, Executive Administrator, San Mateo County Farm Bureau. It’s a pleasure to be here this evening, but I would like to request that the county move very slowly and thoroughly through this issue. There are many areas here which need further review and discussion and evaluation, one being the formation of an irrigation district, which we have been actively working on now for five years. I’m sure everyone has followed the problems that we’re seeing in the Central Valley with the Delta smelt and the future of the Central Valley Project and delivery of water to Southern California. We’ve actively been trying to work toward that end to prevent us from having those type of issues here, and we’ve looked at a variety of different things, spanning from tertiary water for irrigation purposes, and surprisingly, about 40% of the irrigation water in Monterey County now is tertiary water. So most of the vegetables you’re eating from the salad bowl of America have been irrigated with treated sewer water. Expanding that, later on this week, Congress will be undertaking the most massive upgrade of the Food and Drug Administration and food safety issues, and surprisingly, when you look at the food matrix, tertiary water, if used for irrigation, requires no further treatment of the products being irrigated. So there’s a lot of technology and a lot of things going there, and we’re going to have a lot of different issues playing into this. One of the recommendations from the Commission was no new special districts, but in looking at the scope of agriculture within the county, in a broad spectrum of things, we could envision an irrigation district that could serve probably the entire coastal region of San Mateo County using tertiary water and other irrigation resources that could be brought to the table. So we do encourage a lot of care and thought before we move forward, because right now, San Mateo County agriculture survives, and currently, we are paying 2.5 times more for domestic irrigation water than any other part of the state. Our growers here pay over $2,000 an acre foot, and the closest value equal to that is San Diego County at under $800 an acre foot. So we’ve got to be better, we’ve got to do more, but it is the charge of Farm Bureau and one of our primary goals to find a way to bring affordable, adequate water to serve the agricultural community of San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And now, Mr. Lester? There were a number of points for you to respond to, so take all the time you need.
Oh, well, I appreciate that. My name is Charles Lester, and Honorable Chair and Supervisors. I’m happy to be here tonight to talk. We hadn’t intended on giving a point-by-point response to Mr. Monowitz’s presentation, particularly since we had just received some of the recommendations yesterday. We are, though, in the middle of working with your staff, and we had a very productive meeting yesterday about some of the points that were brought up earlier. And so I just wanted to make a few brief remarks, and we are here today to answer questions. Ruby Papp is here as well. She’s been working very closely with the document and the county’s submittal. As your staff noted, the Coastal Commission’s role in the state is to assure that the policies and objectives of the Coastal Act, very broad policies in most cases, are effectively implemented up and down the coast at the local level. And the primary mechanism that we have to do that is the LCP. So LCPs are a critically important aspect of California governance. They’re used up and down the coast in order to effectively implement those policies and protect coastal resources at the local level. As Mr. Monowitz appropriately pointed out, it is imagined as a partnership between the state and local governments in not only developing these LCPs, but in implementing them over time. As you probably know, San Mateo County was one of the first local governments to even have a certified LCP. It was done in the late 1970s and early 1980s. A very strong LCP was put into place, and I can tell you, just from my own experience, that Southern San Mateo County, for example, is held out as one of the shining examples statewide of what a strong LCP can do when coupled with an active and committed public to help with that implementation. And it’s a fine example of how important LCPs are. That said, updates are also critically important, and the Coastal Commission has been doing its best over the recent years to underscore the importance of keeping LCPs up to date, being responsive to new conditions, changed circumstances, new information, and so we have placed a high priority on making sure that the San Mateo County LCP update is effectively completed. With respect to that, as I mentioned, we have been working closely with your staff. We’ve been working with county staff for the last several years. We’ve also engaged with the Planning Commission and the Board. You may recall, at the time, when the LCP was being considered by your Planning Commission and the Board.
and the Board. That includes a meeting that I had with the LCP Subcommittee at the time, including Supervisor Gordon, and I have to say, I appreciate one of the outcomes of that meeting, which was the submittal by the county to the commission in a posture where we could continue to work together on potential modifications and addressing mutual concerns through the process, as opposed to a submittal that would not have allowed for that kind of working relationship. So I feel pretty confident that we've had a good working relationship to date. We're committed to continuing that up through the August meeting, and we have several meetings, I'm sure, yet to have about some of these proposals that are being made. We've heard some of the concerns. We're here tonight, also here to the public, and your concerns about what some of these issues are, and we'll continue to listen and do our best to resolve as many issues and find a meeting of minds on as many issues as we can at the staff level prior to our August hearing. Ms. Groot did mention that we do have a certain amount of flexibility for resubmittals of LCP amendments if we get to a point where our commission has taken an action and there are modifications in there, some of which may be agreeable, some of which may not. There's always the option of continuing that dialogue and having a resubmittal on an LCP that might better meet the objectives of both the commission and the county. I just want to make one substantive comment at this point, and again, we're available for questions or clarifications if you have them through the evening. And that is, with respect to the growth issue, Steve is right, we are still talking about some of the details on that. I did want to emphasize that our concern is about the rates of change with respect to limited public services and particularly traffic and some of the sewer issues that we've had. And so we're not recommending any sort of growth moratorium or stopping of development in light of public services. We are recommending a slow rate of growth, a slower rate of growth, in order to give us the planning space to deal with some of these questions, particularly the traffic. So I would just cast the nature of our recommendation along those lines, not as a growth moratorium. To the extent that there needs to be clarification in some of the language, we're willing to consider language changes or whatever might need to be put in there to make that more clear. So that's our overall approach. Obviously, there's a lot of issues on the table, and we'll see what we can do between now and August, but I look forward to continuing to work with your staff and you up until your July meeting and into our August hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lester. Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, we have a number of speakers this evening, so I'm going to ask that the speakers, I'm going to call three at a time, I'm going to ask that you come forward and line up behind the microphone. These are in no particular order, and again, please limit your comments to two minutes each. The first speaker is Judy Taylor, to be followed by Brent Turner, to be followed by George Mutif.
Good afternoon, and thank you for making the trip over here. My name is Judy Taylor. I'm an El Granada resident. I've been a coast sider for thirty-five years now. I represent and am a part of several groups, SAMCAR, Chamber of Commerce, but I'm here tonight speaking for myself. This is not meant to be disrespectful to Coastal Commission staff or any -- we went through a number of hearings, something like twenty-five, thirty hearings, to develop the LCP update that you submitted to the Coastal Commission. And I must say that as I read the staff report from the Coastal Commission, it was like, gee, thanks for all your work, but this is what we're going to do. And there were so many things in there that had not been vetted here locally that I believe need to be addressed, and I'm very encouraged by the county's recommendations on your sheet, and thank you for those. The philosophical issue that I have is an ongoing issue that seems to have infected the coast side a number of years ago. One of the statements in the Coastal Commission staff update is that all new residential development increases traffic. And I would submit that as long as we accept that as a given, we're going to continue to get that result. That document says we've got a problem with traffic, we have a problem with wet water discharge violations, we have a problem with not adequate water, and it puts all of the efforts on the part of the people who haven't moved here yet to fix them. There is nothing in that document that says, Sam, you should do a better job with your solid waste. It doesn't say anything about, you know, organizations, you need to get a better storm drain system. It doesn't say, hey, folks, you folks that are driving on the highway now, you need to make a commitment to doing a little bit less of it. And we have a president now who uses "we." We need to fix things. And I would submit that on the coast side, we need to fix things. It's not just the person who hasn't moved here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I mentioned Brent Turner and then George Mutif, to be followed by Jim Grady.
Good evening, President Church and esteemed Board of Supervisors. Brent Turner, I'm a born and raised San Mateo County native resident, born in Redwood City and living on the coast side here in Half Moon Bay. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the United States Green Building Council, as well as the National Association of Realtors Green Program. We just wanted to mention that we stand in full support of the Coastal Commission and look forward to further work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. George Mutif, followed by Jim Grady, followed by April Vargas.
He was brief. Unfortunately, I prepared three minutes, but I will adapt and adjust, and I will hand in the full context. Starting off, my name is George Mutif. Good evening, Honorable Board Members, staff, and members of the public. I would like to go item by item, and I'll make it very brief. Revisions to your annual, to the annual growth rate, your analysis addresses this point in as many facets well. Over the last five years, we've averaged thirty-eight units, unit approvals per year, with each new year demonstrating a decline in the number of approvals. I would suggest this pattern would continue over the next five years, and I find that your approach and response is more than reasonable and realistic. In addition, your recognition of the Coastal Commission proposal that prohibiting new development public services policy would supersede the growth rate policy is interesting. You cite, and rightfully so, that the new development plays a significant role in implementing infrastructure improvements, and I concur. The commission attempt to include second units into the Coastal Commission proposed 1% growth limit also proposes, significant challenges and contradictions, which your staff duly notes. Two and three, water quality protection and new policy requiring demonstration of public service capacities are both very well-recognized. There is, your staff has reported neatly in the salient points and issues on these issues. The fourth point, prohibition of wells and septic systems, the commission proposal to deny future wells and septic systems is both unreasonable and unrealistic, given, among other issues, the geographic area. Your staff, again, recognizes and identifies the salient points well. New policies regulating size of public works, I also agree with your staff recommendations, analysis and recommendations, as well as the other significant issues. And if I had to just focus on one point, I would say what you do and how you handle this LCP update will impact all of us in the county with particular attention to those of the coastal zone for years and perhaps decades to come. Your actions on this will most certainly be front and center when Half Moon Bay finally submits their LCP update. And in conclusion, I would say I would urge you, please stay the course. What you have proposed is realistic and worth fighting for if necessary. I would like to thank you for your excellence, and your staff, excellent staff, for the measure you've demonstrated to date, and I strongly encourage you to maintain your efforts and values, which I believe walk the centerline of planning and will serve us well going forward. Thank you for your time and this opportunity.
Thank you. Half Moon Bay Councilman Jim Grady, followed by April Vargas, followed by David Dixon.
Honorable Supervisors, thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak. I am a member of the Half Moon Bay City Council, and I'm speaking as an individual. Just want to make that very clear. I've got two recommendations. I won't take up the full two minutes, but I think as everybody realizes, separation is a bit of an illusion, particularly here on the coast side, and what happens in the unincorporated part of the county has an impact on Half Moon Bay and vice versa. And based upon that, I would like to recommend that the Board of Supervisors uphold the growth rate of 1% that was recommended by the Planning Commission. This was done after many, many meetings. The city of Half Moon Bay just recently fully adopted the Measure D, which implements a 1% growth rate going forward, and I think combining that with the county, it would give us a uniform standard so that we can create the infrastructure that's required to support that growth on a long-term basis. The only other recommendation that I would like to make is that to have the county retain the Coastal Commission staff recommended policy for demonstration of adequate public service capabilities. I think to have the growth rate get out in front of that without being able to demonstrate that the infrastructure's there is where we run into all kinds of problems, particularly from a transportation perspective. A number of people have commented on the other services or utilities that are offered here on the coast, but one where we potentially can have a great deal of gridlock is up and down Highway One, and there needs to be an integrated plan between what happens in the unincorporated part of the county and what happens within the city limits as we look at the Measure A infrastructure issues. So those are my comments, and again, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Jim. April Vargas, followed by David Dixon, followed by Dale Dunham.
Good evening, President Church and members of the Board. We welcome you to the coast side, and as you can see, people are very interested in speaking before you, and it certainly makes it easier for us to have our voices heard when you can make the trip over, so thanks again for that. My name is April Vargas. I live at 377 12th Street in Montero, and I'm speaking as an individual. I broke my comments down into just basically three issues. While I say that I generally do support the recommendations and modification of the Coastal Commission, there were three specific areas in which the county staff has come up with some modifications that I'm supporting, and I do want to thank the staff for an incredible amount of work these last ten years and for putting this together in a way that makes it understandable and really tries to demonstrate the complexity, but also the way in which these issues work together. First of all, regarding that county council's work with memorandum that he produced regarding the new information regarding substandard lots in the recent court cases, I know that you've heard this in a recent issue that came before the Board regarding some houses in Montero, and I would strongly urge the Board to recognize that the build-out numbers may very well have to be adjusted based on the fact that lots that had previously had been considered legal may actually not be based on these recent court decisions. So definitely some more work is going to be required, and I trust that the Board will look into that carefully. Secondly, as far as growth rate is concerned, I certainly agree with my previous speaker, Councilmember Grady. Also, as far as the modification, though, that the county staff has made, supporting, basing the annual growth rate up on the number of units rather than percentage of population would make it simpler, but I do believe that 1% growth rate is really the better, more responsible way to go. And finally, regarding the prohibition against new wells until service and capability can be better assessed, the county has made a recommendation of identifying the circumstances under which wells and/or septic systems will be allowed, but what's really key part of this is there needs to be a monitoring and enforcement provision with anything regarding the wells that will absolutely be implemented and consistently followed. In the past, we've seen the county take certain responsibilities on regarding wells and then have not followed through, so we really need to make sure that this is a bona fide policy that can be adopted and implemented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, April. David Dixon, followed by Dale Dunham, followed by Stephen St. Marie.
David Dixon, Coastside County Water District. Good evening, Honorable Board Members. I would like to say that we support the county staff's recommendations as far as they go. There are clearly a number of issues that remain unresolved and a number of concern to us as a water utility here on the coast, and I just would like to say that I hope that the Board and the county staff will create a process that allows sufficient time for all of us to have meaningful input as we go forward with these important updates to the planning documents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dale Dunham, followed by Stephen St. Marie, and then Nicole DiMartini.
Good evening, Honorable Supervisors. Dale Dunham, Half Moon Bay. I want to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of the Coastal Commission staff's And congratulations on being able to decipher three hundred pages of some of the best double speaks since George Orwell. The other forty-one pages were actually made sense. Please retain our local county options and reject those draconian recommendations intended to, whether purposefully or not, essentially transfer management and decision functions from the county to the Coastal Commission. Let's keep it here, let's plan it here, and let's do it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen St. Marie, followed by Nicole DiMartini, and then Rick Lohman.
Hi, good evening, President Church and Supervisors. My name is Stephen St. Marie, and my address is in San Francisco. I'm here because I'm a member of the Board of the Big Wave Project. You have a very big job before you, and you have been doing an excellent job, and we're very glad to be able to come before you this evening. We have provided a written response to the written amendments of the Coastal Commission, and we understand the staff report recognizes some of our comments, and we thank the staff, and we also thank you for your hard work. Overall, we think you have a very good plan, but we have a couple of concerns, not only as citizens, but because we have an axe to grind. We are Big Wave. A brief, very brief introduction, Big Wave, we're trying to create an independent, inclusive community of people and businesses, providing opportunity for individuals with developmental disabilities while benefiting our neighbors. You should know, I'm one of the lucky ones on the Board. I do not have a special-needs child, but I'm here because I'm a friend of Jeff Peck, who is also on that Board. Our daughters, my daughter and Jeff's daughter, have grown up together and are friends. We have several issues with the Coastal Commission staff amendments that we consider to be showstoppers, and other people will go into them individually. First, connecting to existing utilities that are not as environmentally benign as our own plan and are already overburdened, as you know. Prohibition of the use of wells, what we think is a misguided conclusion regarding traffic congestion, and elimination of the general exemption for affordable housing. We thank you and look forward to a good outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Nicole DiMartini, Rick Lohman, and then Sabrina Brennan.
Good evening, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Nicole DiMartini. I was born and raised in El Granada and am lucky enough to live there now. I also work for the Big Wave Project, and I work for Big Wave because it's the kind of eco-friendly community development that I want in my hometown. I'm concerned with the LCP amendments because I think they change the vision that you, the Board of Supervisors, and I share for our coast side. Conservation is a part of that vision. The proposed LCP amendments from Coastal Commission staff will require infill to connect to existing utilities. This eliminates the possibility of utilizing state-of-the-art conservation technology, such as water recycling, onsite tertiary treatment, and drip irrigation. With a project like Big Wave, such practices could recharge the Pillar Point Marsh and local aquifers with high-quality water. For this reason, the Coastal Act doesn't specifically require the connection to local utilities. We don't believe that San Mateo County should either. Furthermore, this is kind of a catch-22 in that our local sewer authorities have inadequate infrastructure that during peak usage leak raw sewage into the environment, hardly a greener alternative to onsite sustainable systems. In an effort to protect our water supplies and care for our coast side, we strongly encourage the county to allow onsite systems if they provide benefit to coastal resources and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rick Lohman. Rick Lohman, followed by Sabrina Brennan, and then Ellen James.
Good evening, President Church, honorable supervisors. Welcome to the coast side, and thanks for coming out. I'm Miramar resident, but tonight I'm speaking as the president of the Granada Sanitary District. I've been directed to drop off a couple letters, which I will. One was to the Coastal Commission on their original items, and another one is on these new legal rights. I'll just summarize a few items. The one that's been addressed several times here is the new legal rulings about the substandard lots, and we think that should be incorporated into the new figures because that grossly drastically reduces the build-out numbers. The build-out numbers assume that merger will occur. However, absent such merger, the LCP build-out would be exceeded by over 700 units, so we think that's a very significant thing to include. A couple other items from our earlier letter to the Coastal Commission, just to highlight them for the record. The sewage estimates that were used in the report were generated from 2001 figures. That was a very low year for sewage use. We recommend that you use the sewer authority Midcoast Side standard figures of 85 gallons per day per person. That's a much higher figure. And going through, there were some comments in the original proposal that you made to the Coastal Commission that imply the county has jurisdiction over septic systems within the Granada Sanitary District borders. We sent several letters out on that saying that is not true. We would like that addressed in the final version. And the county was proposing to redraw some sanitary district boundaries as part of this report. That's really a latko function and shouldn't be addressed in the actual LCP update that we're going through now. So thank you, and I'll drop off copies with the clerk.
Thank you, Rick. Sabrina Brennan, followed by Ellen James, and then Neil Merrilies.
I'm Sabrina Brennan, and I'm speaking on behalf of the MCC, and I thank the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to speak. The MCC urges the Board of Supervisors to accept all the Coastal Commission staff recommendations with the exception of the following minor adjustment. Coastal Commission staff recommends a 1% residential growth rate per year. The county staff report suggests 75 residential units per year. Recognizing a growth rate based on population is difficult to administer. The MCC recommends a residential growth rate of 40 units per year, which is the equivalent of 1% annual growth rate per year. 40 units per year is the historic average rate of new residential construction. Additionally, since second units and affordable units contribute to infrastructure problems, they need to count towards the annual limit. Midcoast infrastructure is severely deficient and does not meet current population needs. At 50% of the proposed build-out, the midcoast lacks adequate access, community parks, storm drainage systems, water supply, and wet weather sewer infrastructure. We agree with the county staff that adequacy and standards must be clearly stated and measurable. We disagree with the position that development should continue until the standards are agreed upon. Since the completion of the sewer plan expansion in 1999, there has been much new development, but there has been no improvements in getting an adequate urban water supply, storm drainage, and road systems. Instead, that new development has put the midcoast further behind in achieving necessary levels of resource protection. The MCC supports the Coastal Commission staff recommendations to prohibit new urban development on wells and septic systems. The county is recommending a case-by-case review for urban development on wells and septic systems. Limited county staff resources will result in inadequate case-by-case reviews. An existing example of case-by-case reviews not working is the inadequate review of tree removal permits, which are rarely denied. The process proposed by the county to evaluate the impact of development of individual projects on wells will not protect coastal groundwater resources. The most recent groundwater study and the EIRs from the late 1980s show that our groundwater basins are at risk in dry years. It would be cost prohibitive for a builder or an individual project to do a groundwater study evaluating water quality and water level on neighboring wells, nearby wetlands, and riparian resources in addition to the test well. Public works projects must be sized to provide the highest level of resource protection while meeting the needs of future population while avoiding being growth-inducing. In 1999, expansion of the sand plant facilitated development. However, it has not resulted in improvements in roadway, storm drainage, water supply, et cetera. Relying on new development to solve existing problems of inadequate infrastructure does not work because it's not sustainable. The recently adopted county stormwater drainage plan is dependent on funding by the existing community, yet the need to create primarily, yet the need is created primarily by new development. Given the usual failure of voter approval for new assessments and parcel taxes, the construction of improved systems is highly unlikely. Although allowing new development without, allowing new development without planned-funded systems will only result in further congestion, water pollution, and degradation of coastal resources. Thank you. Thank you.
Your time is up, and I'm sorry, I did not hear the buzzer go off. We have to be fair to everyone. Everyone is allotted two minutes. Okay, we didn't hear it down here, so. Yeah, maybe put it by the microphone so we can hear it. Okay, and we do have your letter, so thank you. Ellen James, followed by Neil Merrilies, followed by Madeline McGuire.
Good evening. I had requested that Sabrina be allowed to use my two minutes, so it worked out just fine after all. So the only thing I have to say other than that is that I am sternly opposed to the traffic implications of Big Wave.
Okay, thank you very much. Neil Merrilies, Madeline McGuire, followed by Holly Winon.
My name is Neil Merrilies. I'm here speaking as a private citizen, and thank you very much for coming to Half Moon Bay and make it easier for everybody to show up. I want to generally support the staff report, Sammatt Hill County staff report, and I also want to support a slow growth rate. I think the whole point of slow growth rate is to allow the infrastructure to catch up. So the infrastructure shouldn't be a problem if we do our job and slowly keep up with the growth. I would suggest a 1% growth rate, but exempting second units and small structures, because if you equally weight second units and monster homes, nobody's going to waste an allocation on a second unit or a small structure because the allocations will be so precious that people will all build expensive homes. So I think if you cut the growth rate down and exempt second units and small structures, we might actually get some small structures. And a couple things jumped out at me regarding infrastructure. Please don't limit special districts. And you know, on the coast, we don't have enough bathrooms near the beaches, we don't have enough walkways and pathways and stairways to the beach, and it may be that we'll need a special district, a Parks and Rec special district, to take care of some of those problems, which would benefit residents, of course, but also visitors and the California community in general. So we basically don't know what our needs are going to be in the future, and please don't put a limit on that because that may be the only way to fix some of the problems that we have, like parks, transportation, and healthcare. We may need special districts to take care of those problems. And the last thing I just wanted to say is also, please don't limit water recycling. You know, if we could recycle every speck of water that we use on the coast magically somehow in the future, I think that would be a really good idea. And, okay, time's up. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Madeline McGuire, followed by Holly Winon, and then Jeff Peck.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm speaking on behalf of Big Wave. My name is Madeline McGuire, and I was supposed to go right after Nicole and Stephen, but I think we must have gotten shuffled up. So I'm continuing from their points that they made, and I'm discussing the second point, which is the prohibition of the use of wells. The Coastal Commission staff proposes prohibiting the use of private wells, and the recent Kleinfelder Midcoast Groundwater Study Phase II states that some aquifers on the coast side have excess capacity even during drought years. Utilizing our local supplies has proven to be the safest and most environmentally friendly alternative to importing, storing, disinfecting, and transmitting water from a non-native source like Hetchatchee. We would like the county to maintain the option of using sustainably superior water sources by tying well usage to a groundwater management plan that is consistent with the Kleinfelder groundwater study. This would then allow the use of existing wells located in aquifers of excess capacity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Holly Winon, followed by Jeff Peck, and then Scott Holmes.
Hello, board.
Hi.
My name's Holly Winon, and I've been a longtime resident of Sammatt Hill County. I have been part of the Big Wave Project for many, many years now, and because my son, Patrick, needs this kind of facility, but also because Big Wave represents the kind of growth that Sammatt Hill County and all counties should be looking at. Big Wave is smart growth. It's mixed development that balances social and economic and environmental needs of the community, all in one community within itself. In this way, it also embodies the goals of the Coastal Act and the recent land use legislation, SB 375 and AB 32, by giving people the opportunity to work, shop, and play where they live, thus reducing greenhouse gas emissions caused by the commutes that all coast-siders have to make. The Coastal Commission staff have proposed mitigating development based on the increasing of car trips, not the increase of traffic congestion. With this proposition, every development would be punished for trips generated, even if these trips are reverse-flow or replace long car rides over the hill. It would make any smart growth development, including Big Wave, impossible to build. We request that the county LCP focuses on the increase of peak trips. This will allow for the development of projects that actually reduce congestion and improve community by encouraging local commutes with reverse-flow traffic. Thank you.
Jeff Peck, followed by Scott Holmes, and then David Byers.
Hello. My name is Jeff Peck. I live in El Granada. Honorable board, thank you for having this, this meeting. Our community really needs it. I'm addressing one particular thing that California Coastal Commission has put in their amendments, and that has to do with affordable housing. If this amendment is passed, virtually all affordable housing of any meaningful size would be excluded from the midcoast. This confuses us as the California Coastal Act, as well as the existing midcoast LCP, includes specific goals to encourage affordable housing for persons of low and moderate income. As stated in the Coastal Act, quote, "The legislature finds and declares that it is important for the commission to encourage the protection of existing and the provision of new affordable housing opportunities for persons of low and moderate income." The CCC's proposed amendment change to the LCP guts the intention of the Coastal Act in regards to providing affordable housing by shoehorning two amendment changes. It combines drastic limits in the number of units allowed to be constructed on the midcoast with the refusal to exempt affordable housing from these limits. Contrary to the Coastal Act, to the existing LCP, to all ideals of social equity which is in the Coastal Act, the CCC is proposing, quote, "Exemptions only for HUD," that's HUD, federal-funded housing defined in Section 6102 of the zoning regulations. Now, being reasonable, we have to assume, I say we, everybody on the coast, that there must be some oversight on the part of the CCC. For why would any agency with a legislative goal of encouraging the construction of affordable housing for the low-income intentionally limit exemptions only to federally funded projects? What about state or county-funded projects? What about privately funded?
Could you wrap it up, please?
I will wrap it up. I won't take as much time as Sabrina. Big Wave provides this, and I'll cut it short.
I would have terminated her earlier, but as I said, I couldn't hear the question.
I understand. Big Wave offers this. It offers 50 affordable housing units to the most disadvantaged people in this state. It also offers 20 affordable housing units to those who take care of our special people.
Okay. Thank you. Please.
I'm encouraging the, I'm encouraging the board to please do not exclude an exemption for affordable housing.
Okay, thank you very much. Scott Holmes, followed by Dave Byers, and then Rosie McKinney.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm on the board of the nonprofit Big Wave Wellness Center, and I'm also the project designer and engineer, and we've specifically designed the project to be consistent with the county LCP and their amendments, along with the Coastal Act. And Big Wave was designed to be consistent with the goals of the Coastal Act that protect local resources, restore sensitive habitat, and the scenic view corridors, and protect and improve public access. These environmental goals are accomplished while improving the social well-being of the community, creating local jobs, and improving the economy. Big Wave has been designed to protect the biological and aquatic resources of the Pillar Point Marsh and coastal environment. The water quality and quantity of surface water to Pillar Point Marsh and the airport aquifer are protected by the onsite treatment of all stormwater, including infiltration of over 85% of the stormwater. Big Wave is designed to recycle all of its wastewater. This includes water for organic farming, landscaping, irrigation, and wetlands restoration. Any water not recycled is infiltrated. Big Wave generates and treats its own water. Big Wave generates all its power onsite with solar and wind. It's a sustainable environmental project. We not only protect and restore the wetlands, we actually don't fill or alter any existing wetlands. Big Wave restores eight acres, and it's designed as a geomorphic by some expert biologists. It's really a very cool design, actually. That's about 40% of the site. We protect view corridors by situating the buildings within the habitat and also in a forested landscape of native trees that actually exceed the height of all the buildings. We protect access by providing almost a mile of bike trail and walking trails. We have, we are smart growth project. We put commercial where the residential is, generating reverse flow, and I think I'll wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Byers, followed by Rosie McKinney, and then Terry McKinney.
Good evening, President Church, members of the board. I'm Dave Byers. I represent Big Wave. I've only got two minutes, so I'm going to be very, I'm going to be very short. Paul Conant, the Director of Environmental Management, used to say, "I can write the county housing element in one sentence. If you don't make $50,000 a year, you can't live here." And that was many years ago. I think we could look at the Coastal Commission staff modifications and take a 71-page report and write it in one sentence. No development will be permitted other than single-family residences in the urban exclusion zone. That's what that 71-page is saying. Now, in 1982, when the county's LCP was approved by the Coastal Commission, the county was sued. The case is called Clayton versus County of Sammatt Hill. Intervening on behalf of the county was the Legal Aid Society. They intervened because we had three affordable housing sites in the coastal zone. Now, it's 27 years later, not one stick of housing has been built on those three affordable housing sites. Big Wave would allow affordable housing to be built for the most disadvantaged people in our community, and the Coastal Commission's restrictions would prevent it from happening. I see these restrictions as efforts to erect a procedural roadblock to prevent you, the elected officials, from having a substantive review of a development project that has been at the county since October 2005. We've been playing by the rules. We've been designing the project consistent with the LCP, and it's a very good project. And I think you ought to have an opportunity to review it and see if it meets what you believe to be the Coastal Act requirements. Now, we could have a lot of people out here from Big Wave, but instead of doing that, I'm just going to ask all the people who are proponents of Big Wave to please stand. I'm just going to ask all the people who are proponents of Big Wave to please stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rosie McKinney, followed by Terry McKinney, followed by Sid Young. Please, no applause, no interruption of speakers.
President Church and Supervisors, my name is Rosie McKinney. I'm a teacher, and I live in Scotts Valley. But I am part of the Big Wave project because I'm the parent of a developmentally-disabled young man who's soon to be 16. As we have taken this journey as adoptive parents to try to guide our son and his growth, we have been given the option of sending him to Texas or sending him to Philadelphia for adequate housing, which doesn't allow for us to be a continued part of his life. I just want to say there is a huge need for a facility like this that can help the developmentally disabled. Einstein said that the measure of a society is how they take care of their weakest members. And I believe Big Wave has done a wonderful job of looking to the future and providing for them. Please take away these roadblocks. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry McKinney, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable Councilmembers. My name is Terry McKinney, and Rosie's my wife. We live in Scotts Valley, and we participate in the Special Olympics basketball program that you have here in Half Moon Bay. I'm also the superintendent of the Santa Cruz Water Department, and I was also on the local mental health board at the city of Santa Cruz, for the county of Santa Cruz, for about two years. So, from those past experiences, I just wanted to point out a couple things. One, there is a tremendous need for housing for mentally ill patients, mentally ill and developmentally-disabled community, and I'm sure that you guys have been in budget deliberations over the past month, and I'm sure your social services people have come in and told you that there is major budget cuts affecting these communities. And so, I'm hoping that something such as this plan change doesn't prevent more barriers for creating housing and more problems for this community that it's already facing. And also, from the aspect of being a treatment plan operator and wastewater treatment plan operator, these alternative systems work. The San Lorenzo River Corridor faced different environmental projects or problems through the years, and they solved it with alternative treatments. They didn't have to go to moratoriums. They didn't have to say, you know, stop growth. They were able to come to creative solutions, and I hope that you really look at those alternatives.
Okay, thank you. Sid Young, followed by Catherine Slater-Carter, and then Jim Wilkinson.
I'm Sid Young from Moss, oh, sorry, Moss Beach, resident since 1988, and I'm a lot owner. I have a question. I don't know if you're answering questions tonight, but we've had a new water connection moratorium since before I moved here in '88. And I was just wondering, should the LCP pass as proposed with restriction on future domestic wells? Will the San Mateo County Assessor's Office be willing to reduce property taxes since vacant lot values, especially in Moss Beach and Montero where the moratorium exists, will adversely affect property values?
Well, that would be an issue for the assessor to address, and we can certainly have staff address that issue when we conclude all the speakers.
Thank you. Because there's so many vacant lots, it seems like Moss Beach and Montero will be more adversely affected because further south, they can buy their water from over the hill.
Okay, thank you very much. Catherine Slater-Carter, Jim Wilkinson, Hillary Swery.
Good evening, Catherine Slater-Carter. I'm on the MidCoast Community Council and on the Montero Water and Sanitary District, but I am speaking as an individual. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for having this meeting on the coast, and also to thank the staff for its hard work on the response to the Coastal Commission staff suggested modifications. In brief, I support, still support, the Coastal Commission staff suggested modifications. For the record, I've lived on the coast for 32 years. In that 32 years, I have seen a substantial decrease in the ability of the infrastructure to serve the population as it has grown, especially since the completion of the SAM plant in 1999. The county is in charge of the most efficient systems: urban parks, stormwater drainage, wells, septic systems, and roads. They have not been improved since 1999. In fact, the growth has made these systems, impacted these systems even more so. The past attitude, and probably given prop to '18, the only feasible way of fixing these systems is to come to the people and ask us to pay for them. But given the current economic situation, I think it's highly unlikely that folks are going to pay for the much-needed stormwater system improvements and roads, et cetera. This brings to mind the phrase, insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. I think the Coastal Commission staff is suggesting some different ways of trying to deal with this problem so we can bring the infrastructure up to serve the needs of the build-out population instead of falling further and further behind. The local special districts are working to solve the problems. Montero Water and Sanitary District and Granada Sanitary District through SAM, and with some of the help of the Board of Supervisors on the Burnham Strip, have created a program to eliminate wet weather flow and Montero, and a program for recycled water. Granada and, or, I'm sorry, Montero Water and Coastside County are seeking new sources of water to serve the, as LaFco said, 1,100 current domestic wells on the coast side. Thank you very much. Please support the Coastal Commission staff.
Thank you. Jim Wilkinson, Hillary Swery, Brad Jabe. When I call your name, would you please come forward to the front row or stand in line here so we can get through this?
Yeah. We appreciate you coming out from the Board. My name is Jim Wilkinson. I guess I'm the last full-service well driller in San Mateo County. We've been, we have been in business for over 20 years. We have several thousand customers that spread all over the county. Of particular interest is the question of the sustainability of our water resources here on the coast side. As you all know, when you start in Montero and you travel all the way through El Granada, you'll notice that we have massive granitic formations that sit above these areas with lots of decomposed granite. This makes immense reservoirs. Now, I saw the failed concept that the Coastal Commission had several years ago, when they decided that we should abandon hundreds of wells that were perfectly operational, functional in the Half Moon Bay area. Wells that went through the droughts did fine. I have watched wells through several droughts, and I've got to say that that's probably one of our strongest resources that we have. It's not a resource for large-volume production that municipal water companies need, but when you talk about small residential units, we can, we can support hundreds of additional families on wells on the coast side without any, any problem at all. Before we drill wells, we do some geological assessments. We look at where the sources of water are. We look at the reservoirs. And I think I can say, you know, unequivocally, that concerns of the sustainability are really not even worth consideration in comparison with the savings that we'll have on the coast side, and also in reducing the increases in water rates that we've had to experience because of the reduction of wells on the coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Swery, Brad Jabe, Kirsten Jabe.
Hillary Swery, I live in 247 Second Street in Montero, California. I want to thank you very much for coming over, and as you know, I've come over to your side of the hill a few times in the last month on a couple of issues. My position, I'm representing myself. My position has not changed about coastal growth. I agree with it. I agree with growth and building, but I fully support the Coastal Commission staff report. We have problems on the coast side. We have problems with sewage, with water, with drainage. The agricultural community are not the only ones paying premium for water. I think we pay in Montero more for water than anyone else in the state. So, there are issues. They're being addressed, and I fully support my MidCoast Community Council and their recommendations in this. Green building, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize I would be sitting in on an infomercial for Big Wave tonight. I literally was not expecting that, and I only knew about this meeting last night, so I'm not very well-versed on all of the points. But I want to say, green building is a great idea. It's a wonderful idea, and I fully support it. But we know that most people don't do it, and they don't do it well. You know that more than anything. You awarded a builder a special award for doing great green building on the coast side. You did that last month. Well, that means it's not being done a lot if the county Board of Supervisors comes up with a special award for a builder who builds at such a high standard. And I applaud that you did that, because I want more builders to do that. They talk about it, but they don't really do it, and they don't really do it in their actions. So, we need to still grow, but grow smart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Brad Jabe, followed by Kirsten Jabe, and then Terry Gossett.
Good evening, President Church and honorable supervisors. I'm Brad Jabe, a Greenpoint rater of new and existing homes, and advisor of new and existing homes for Greenpoint Rating. I'm a general contractor and a real estate broker. Tonight, I speak on behalf of SAMCAR, the San Mateo County Association of Realtors. As advocates for private property rights, SAMCAR appreciates the opportunity to participate in the LCP update. SAMCAR supports the policies that will enable responsible development in the mid-coast. With that goal in mind, we understand that LCP must contain policies that are consistent with the California Coastal Act. To that end, we strongly believe that the balance must be achieved between the goals of development and the preservation of coastal resources. Outright prohibitions, rigorous restrictions, are not the best method to create livable, sustainable mid-coast community. Rather, we encourage the county to ensure that all existing public services are considered and alternative resources explored before the policies are implemented that will serve only to stop development in the mid-coast community. We urge the county to reject the prohibition of wells and believe that the existing water supplies should be fully utilized before the purported lack of capacity is used as a basis to stop development. SAMCAR fully supports policy that leads to the creation of additional affordable housing stock and asks that this remain a component, a component of the LCP with strong incentives. We encourage the county to retain the proposed annual growth rate of 75 units per year.
Your time is up. If you can wrap it up.
Okay. Development can be achieved in a manner that is consistent with and not harmful to the existing community. Reasonable development is necessary to ensure the viability and sustainability of the mid-coast community. Thank you very much.
Kirsten Jabe, followed by Terry Gossett, and then Paul Perkovic.
Hello, thank you for being here on the coast side. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Kirsten Jabe, and I live in El Granada, and I'm also a member of the Association of Realtors, speaking on behalf of SAMCAR. SAMCAR understands the need for balance between infrastructure capacity and the rate of growth and development. And with that said, we support your preliminary response, the staff's preliminary response to retain the annual limit as initially proposed at 75 new units per year. According to updated figures, a 1% growth rate would allow for approximately 40 new units per year, and using the updated build-out estimates, it would take nearly 86 years to achieve a total build-out of 7,153 units, and 76 years with a total build-out of 6,757 units. Achieving build-out nearly 100 years from now does nothing to solve the short-term crisis and long-term problems of the housing shortage. Stretching out our build-out timeframe for housing for nearly 100 years is prohibitive restrictive, restriction on the coast-side community and its residents, and as such, a 1% growth rate limit should not be imposed. Further, we oppose the Commission's recommendation to include application of this limit to secondary dwelling units. Secondary dwelling units provide much-needed, and in many instances, affordable housing stock, but are clearly not conventional single-family homes. Secondary units do not necessarily consume nor require the same amount of public services or other resources. Accordingly, we support excluding secondary dwelling units from the total build-out unit count. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Gossett, Paul Perkovic, and John Lynch.
Hello, honorable supervisors and staff. My name is Terry Gossett from Moss Beach. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to comment on the mid-coast LCP, a great opportunity. I have submitted this letter for the public record. For seven years, people of the mid-coast have fully participated in scores, hundreds, as Catherine Slater-Carter said, gazillions of meetings about this LCP. And then in January of 2007, your staff, your very able staff, in honor of George Bergman and all his efforts, presented that to the Coastal Commission. And until last Wednesday, there was no other public participation. So, it was very interesting when Ruby Pat came and made her presentation, and it was Steve, and it was greatly appreciated by the, by the community. The CCC staff recommendation is a drastic departure from what we have seen from the county, and I'm concerned that we're not going to have enough time for public and service agency participation in this process. If you look at the Coastal Act, Section 3006, there's three zeros in there, it states, "The public has a right to fully participate in decisions affecting coastal planning, conservation, and development." And then if you look at the California Code of Regulation, Section 13552, it states, "The LCP amendment shall include a listing of members of the public, organizations, and agencies, and summaries of their positions that they have received, and the governing authority yourself responds to those." I'm concerned that it's the Coastal Commission get all of those comments, because when I look at their staff report, 341 pages, it does not appear that that was the case. Next, that was just the process. I had an issue, but with the 19 issues in two minutes, I would have less than six seconds per issue, so I thought I'd just pick one topic. Prohibition of private wells in the urban area is an extremely unwise proposal. Given the 32-year water moratorium, was that it?
Yeah.
Two suggestions.
Okay, go ahead.
One suggestion was, if you could consider the use of a geographical information system, you could use that to help visualize, reconcile data and policies, and mitigate the problem. And secondly, if you could defer the agenda item for the Coastal Commission until the public has had a time to fully be involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Paul Perkovic, John Lynch, and then Ann Carey.
Good evening, Supervisor Church and other members of the Board, staff, and Coastal Commission staff. My name is Paul Perkovic. I served on the MidCoast Community Council for 10 years during much of the time when this plan, the update, was being worked on, and I currently serve as president of the Board of Directors of the Montero Water and Sanitary District. And you have letters from the district, and we'll have more. And I'd like to speak in sort of general terms about water. And it's a thought question I'd like to pose to you and to the Coastal Commission and the members of the audience and my constituents. In the late '70s, I was just beginning my career in the software industry, and I had some business trips out here to California. And I remember seeing signs in public restrooms that said, "If it's mellow, let it yellow." If it's yellow, let it mellow. If it's brown, flush it down. The question I have for you is, what does it mean to have adequate water supplies? We're at about half of build-out now. We could serve build-out with existing water supplies if everyone could use half as much water. Is that something that your Board, or the Coastal Commission, or the people who live in this community think is realistic? If it's not, do we plan to have enough water to meet people's ordinary needs during dry and very dry years, or do we expect people to have to go back to the days when you would not flush your toilets? 30 years ago, 1976 to '79, the community- 30 years ago, 1976 to 79, the community that I live in and serve had water supplied by a private water utility. Development had been allowed to go on in that community by the county, and everyone, I'm sure, thought there was adequate water. But then a severe drought hit, and citizens' utilities' water tanks went dry. They had to truck in water from very far away in order to have fire protection for the community. Is that a risk that we're willing to run? So I ask you to give very careful thought to the adequacy of water, and whether that supply should be sufficient to meet needs during droughts, or whether you should plan for when, plan building for when you have lots of water. Thank you very much for your time.
John Lynch, Ann Carey, Lenny Roberts.
Good morning, Church. Board President, Honorable Members of the Board. I, I must be confused. I thought this was going to be discussing the local coastal program update, not a Big Wave meeting. It seemed like that's what it turned out to. Only one is, I want to say is, I am fully in support of the California Coastal Commission's modifications for the midcoast update. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Carey, followed by Lenny Roberts, and then James Larimer.
Good evening, Honorable Supervisors. I'm Ann Carey. I attended almost all the meetings for the LCP update from 2002 to 2006. There were 21 community workshops in which we were given substantial amount of data and research. Then there were 20 to 25 Planning Commission meetings and Board of Supervisor hearings where numerous perspectives were deliberated, and where balanced policies were determined. And I think that the county should be applauded for this update. In regards to Coastal Commission's recommendation for 1% growth rate, I support the county's recommendation of 75 units. The county's proposed 75 units is comparable to the maximum 1.5% growth rate in Half Moon Bay, and it's important that the county select a growth rate that it can implement. Although the average permits in the past five years has been 38 units, there's been, there has not been any large-scale development, and the difficulty arises, and now the county will fairly distribute the annual permits among large-scale development and the small builder. I agree with the county's recommendation to clarify the relationship of proposed public service policies to the growth rate. It's important to recognize the growth rate's relationship to the expansion of infrastructure. When CCWD was proposing its expansion of the El Granada Pipeline in 2003, one of the arguments for the reduction in the size of the pipe was that the midcoast was considering a 1% growth rate. In that staff report to the county, the Coastal Commission has mentioned that CCWD has limitations on its ability to supply water through the pipeline, which contributes to the need to restrict growth. This is tied to the Coastal Commission's proposed new policy of regulating the size of public works to other public work capacity. The Coastal Commission placed restrictions on El Granada Pipeline tied to traffic. I agree with the county's recommendation for the Coastal Commission to delete this new policy, and I agree with the county's recommendation to limit the capacity of public works to serve build-out. I agree with the county that precautionary approach should be taken regarding the drilling of wells, and that there should be circumstances for the wells. But most important is, is to find ways to provide municipal water so there won't be wells. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Lenny Roberts, James Larimer, and Kevin Lancing.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission and staff. I'm Lenny Roberts. I'm speaking for Committee for Green Foothills. I had the honor of voting to certify the county's LCP in 1980 as, as an alternate member for the Board of Supervisors on the Coastal Commission. So continue to have a great interest in, in the amendments. I submitted a letter to you, which you should have. I won't read the whole thing, and don't have time. Just to summarize our points, we have only reacted to the first staff report, not the one that just came out. So the first recommendation, we do support the 1% growth limit that the Coastal Commission is recommending. It was also recommended by your Planning Commission, and the Half Moon Bay City has also a 1% growth limit. We believe that that is sound public policy in light of the inadequacies of road, sewer, and water capacities. We don't support exceptions to the growth limit for Princeton caretaker units or for second units, as they also do contribute to the infrastructure demand. We would support basing the annual growth rate on the number of units rather than a percentage of the population. Water quality protection, we would suggest that, I, I know that your, our staff, county staff and coastal staff are working together to refine their different positions, and one suggestion is that the LCP amendment should specify that this current stormwater pollution prevention standards, or their current replacement, shall apply for water quality protection. On recommendation number three, on demonstration of public service capacities, we support the coastal staff's suggested modifications that require demonstration of adequate public services. But there are some practical problems, as the county staff has pointed out, with applying this capacity to all public services. So we suggest that the, the two staffs work together to clarify two issues about that. Oh, I will stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. James Larimer, Kevin Lancing, Steve Hyman.
Honorable Supervisors, thank you. My name is James Larimer. I've lived on the coast for the last 22 years. I'm also a elected director of the Coastside County Water District. I am here speaking for myself, however, tonight. However, my experience on the Water District will inform what I will be saying tonight. I'm very troubled by the recommendations of the Coastal Commission for their revisions of the, of the LCP as proposed by the county. And in particular, the, the item that stands out is the linkage of infrastructure and the rate at which infrastructure is improved and expanded, linking that directly to growth rates, and then linking it to all of the types of infrastructure that can be developed: parks, roads, schools, sewers, water, et cetera. I think that's impractical. To give you a good example of that, when we were replacing infrastructure in the County, Coastside County Water District, we were asked to restrict the, the planning horizon for the components that we were replacing. We were replacing components that were 60 years old or older with modern technology that would last at least 100 years. And to have a small, a short frame for how, how long that will serve simply adds greater cost to the future. For a very small nominal cost, you can essentially guarantee that no matter what kind of development happens, that will be, it'll be adequately served by the infrastructure replacing it at any one point in time. So linking the rate of, of development to the rate of infrastructure improvement, I think is a, is a terrible mistake, because there's no benefit to doing that, and there's no harm by, by essentially making that infrastructure improvement last as long as it might possibly, as long as the hardware itself will last. I would add some other comments, but I see my time is up. I am concerned about using infrastructure to control growth. There are better ways to directly control growth, to, to hide that by limiting infrastructure is simply bad policy.
Thank you, James. Kevin Lancing, Steve Hyman, and Leonard Warren.
Good evening, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Kevin Lancing. I'm a Half Moon Bay resident. So I just want to say I support the Coastal Commission staff's recommendations. And what those recommendations do is, they make sure that the county's submittal is implementing the Coastal Act at the local level, which is the purpose of the LCP. And I actually think that's, that, you know, that should be made clear. And I think we all can agree that the citizens of the coast side are going to be affected very strongly by the development scenario that's going to take place over the next several decades. The county's build-out scenario envisions roughly a doubling of the number of cars and houses on the coast side over the next 30, 30 years. That's going to have a huge impact on quality of life and on coastal access. Coastside infrastructure elements, namely roads, sewers, water systems, and school systems, are already overburdened, so you can imagine what's going to happen when you double the number of cars and households over the next 30 years to those infrastructure elements. And we had a natural experiment of what, you know, the build-out scenario might look like in 2006, when the Devil's Slide was out for four months. And that, in that event, doubled the traffic going between Half Moon Bay and the midcoast during morning and evening commute hours, and that was an extremely difficult situation to handle. And so that's the kind of thing that is going to play out if we rush toward this full build-out, which is going to double the number of houses. I mean, and so that's what the motivation is for the 1% growth rate. That's why the county's own Planning Commission recommended 1% growth, based on local input. It didn't come from the Coastal Commission. It came from local individuals and the local county Planning Commission. Half Moon Bay has a 1% growth rate. The 1.5% growth rate that Ms. Carey referenced is only a limited area in the downtown infill, so the growth rate that applies to overall Half Moon Bay is 1%. The county's claiming that they want 75 units per year, which is actually not true. It's 75 units plus exemptions, which, for an unknown number of second units, an unknown number of caretakers' quarters, and an unknown number of affordable housing units. And so if you really want to, you know, make sure that the, the county's infrastructure, the, the coast side infrastructure can handle this build-out scenario, you need to make sure that we implement a 1% growth. Thanks.
Thank you. Steve Hyman, Leonard Warren, Carrie Burke.
Good evening. Thank you very much for coming out here and hearing us speak. My name is Steve Hyman. I'm a 26-year resident of Half Moon Bay. I'm also the owner of Century 21 in Half Moon Bay. I want you to know that I do support your recommendation to not put a moratorium on water wells in the midcoast. That is something that, it will be very punitive to people. If I can just remind you of the sewer moratorium that we had in the late 80s and mid 90s, that had a devastating impact on property values, where the average price of a lot went from around $225,000 back in 1989, 1990, down to a value of around $65,000, $70,000. And prices didn't rebound until the sewer plant was open. I would expect a water well moratorium to have the same sort of devastating impact on property values, more so in the Moss Beach, Montero area, but would certainly impact Half Moon Bay and El Granada, because the water connections are still pretty expensive. So I hope that you will not agree with the Coastal Commission in terms of putting a moratorium on wells. And I know there's also been a lot of talk about the growth that we have here, and it's excessive. And I can just say that, based on writing a real estate column for the Half Moon Bay Review for over 10 years, and probably having more data on coast side real estate than anybody, in the last three and a half years, there has been exactly 60 build-able lot sales between Half Moon Bay through Montero. And if you just look in the midcoast, in that same three and a half year period, there have been a total of 30 lot sales that have happened. So it's really just hyped out of proportion in terms of what's really going on here. Sad to say, the cost of permits, the time period has made it very uneconomical for people to build houses, particularly builders. So most of them have abandoned building on the coast, so it's mainly just people who are building their own lots. And thank you very much for your time.
Leonard Warren, Carrie Burke, Joe Guntrin.
Good evening, Mr. President, Honorable Members of the Board. The current growth rate is already very stressful on the community, and obviously on the infrastructure. And a limit that you never reach isn't a limit. So I fully support the coastal staff recommendation of 1%. However, I agree with county staff's pointing out that it's difficult to administer a percentage, so let's convert that to the equivalent, which is 40 units, the historic average. It's seldom reached, and it will normally not be an issue. And none of the, no types of residential should be exempted, because they all contribute to the strains on the community and the infrastructure. At a, at a Planning Commission meeting, your Planning Commission, on, hearing on the LCP update that was held at El Granada School, one of the Planning Commissioners said, "We're headed toward a train wreck," and he sees no reason to speed towards it. Regarding wells, the only prudent thing to do, until you have really solid information that says it's not a problem, is to prohibit new use of wells. I'm on a well. I'm very concerned what's going to happen in the El Granada aquifer if you multiply by five, the number of houses drawing from that aquifer. The county has great exposure if there is a mass failure of wells. And that's very likely, as indicated in the Kleinfelder Report. I'd also like to point out, in terms of what the, the community hearings represented, the recommendation from your Planning Commission is somewhat of a compromise, but it was reasonable to most of the community members. The coastal staff recommendation is reasonably consistent with your Planning Commission's recommendation. So I urge you to go with the coastal staff recommendation, and I'll support the recommendations made by Lenny Roberts on behalf of Committee for Green Foothills. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Carrie Burke, Joe Guntrin, and then Jeff Allen.
Good evening, President Church, members of the board, all staff present and coast siders. I'm Carrie Burke, Half Moon Bay. I would have preferred to make some detailed comments tonight, but to tell you the truth, I've had a problem wading with a capital W through all the Coastal Commission modifications. I do commend the county's staff's ability to simplify and to prepare their preliminary response to these complex Coastal Commission modifications. And hopefully, prior to the July 7th meeting, I will give you some written comments. Like most people gathered here tonight, I did attend the workshops, the Planning Commission hearings, the Board of Supervisors hearings over extended number of years. And it is disappointing that the Coastal Commission staff has not recognized the level of effort and expense that the county and the citizens committed to improving our certified local coastal amendment proposal. My preliminary review of the Coastal Commission modification indicates that many of them are unacceptable and should be rebuffed. We've all worked very hard on reaching compromises, and we, as a community, were able to create the LCP amendment package which your board approved. Why should we throw that effort away? Why should we, we agree to unknown and potentially devastating impacts to our community from a majority of the Coastal Commission modifications? I do believe that San Mateo County is doing our part to implement coastal policies, and basically, our, to me, our coast side is better than most. Why agree to unvetted new policies when we understand and are committed to our, our community-driven LCP amendments as we proposed? Please help us retain our local land use control, and please carefully evaluate the impact from the Coastal Commission proposed changes, and decide what's best for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Guntrin, and then Jeff Allen.
Good evening, Board Supervisors. My name is Joe Guntrin, and I live at 1351 Cedar Street. I've lived on that block for the last 28 years. 30 years ago, I heard, "No infrastructure, no sewer, no water, no roads." And we tried to fix it, and we get stopped all the time by certain groups in different districts. I, I asked why, after all the hard work the community has done over the last seven years, public hearings, public meetings, debate. The, the issues were, the issues were hammered out at all these hearings between the environmental groups and local property owners, businesses, and county officials. We submitted our final decisions for approval to the Coastal Commission staff, who did not participate, who did not reside in the community, and they ignored what we had to say. It is my understanding that we do not have to update the midcoast LCP. If the Coastal Commission does not recognize our work, then I ask our local elected officials to leave the midcoast LCP alone. It works the way it is. In these tough economic times, with enormous budget cuts and job losses, why penalize a positive, regulated income and tax-producing growth? In closing, there are three items I wish to comment on. The first one, the San Mateo County Well Ordnance is one of the most regulated ordinances in California, if not the United States. It has proven built-in safeguards. My understanding, there has been approximately 550 wells drilled in the last 24 years. Four of those have, have failed. That is a percentage of .0072 of 1%. This battle over wells in the Coastal Commission was won in a lawsuit in 1985 and 1986 down in San Diego. I was present. McCracken and Byers were present. The second issue is the annual limit on building permits at 75. This figure was intensely negotiated at the local community hearings.
Joe, can you wrap it up, please?
At least I was able to comment on one of them. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Jeff Allen.
Thank you and hi to the board of supervisors. Thanks for being here tonight and give us a chance to speak. I support your position. I think we came together as a community over the last seven, eight, nine years. We worked out the issues. We came up with what we felt was the best plan for our coast side, the part of the world that we live in. And I would urge you to stand steadfast in your resolve that we've already done the work and I believe that what we've done is fine. As far as infrastructure, I can't speak for the whole coast. I'm resident of Pescadero. I'm on the PMAC. I'm the vice chair and I'm speaking for myself. But what I can tell you, this past weekend, we had over 800 bicyclists in Pescadero for an event with in excess of 500 vehicles. We had, I believe it was 600 Vietnam War veterans on Harley Davidsons had an event in Pescadero. The Sports Car Club of America had an event on the coast side that came through Pescadero. And as far as infrastructure, the people on the coast side do very little to impact what's here. It's a lot of people from other places coming over here that has more of an impact than we do. So I would urge you to stand fast. I would urge you not to throw out the work that we've done over the last seven or eight years. And I support you and your stand against the coastal commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And that concludes all of the speakers this evening. So that will bring it back to the board for any comments and discussion. Are there any questions of staff or any comments? This matter will be continued to our meeting in July. I don't have the date of that in front of me right now. What was the date, Lisa?
July 7th is the recommended date.
July 7th. For further direction to staff, Supervisor Groom.
Mr. Church, I would like to ask if the July 7th has to be the final deadline? Or is there time to allow more public comment if it's desired?
Okay.
July 7th is recommended because that then gives, excuse me, the time to forward the recommendations to the coastal commission staff so they can analyze them and prepare their staff report for the August 11th and 12th.
That's a firm deadline.
We can confer and see if there's any flexibility in that?
That's as to the suggested changes, but then there's also the possibility of a resubmittal. Correct.
That would be in response to the proposed modifications and any agreements we can achieve between now and then. If at the August hearings, the coastal commission takes action that then the board determines not to support in full, then there's an option of a resubmittal, which would address those areas. We can continue the discussion in that case and address the areas that agreement couldn't be reached.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Supervisor Tissier.
I guess I'm not really clear. Lisa, if we decided that we didn't feel we had enough input, is that a drop dead date with the coastal commission? I mean, they're meeting throughout the year. I'm not saying we wouldn't be there. I mean, we've had a lot of input tonight and we've had a lot of good information, but I think there may be some concern from a lot of people that we've spent a lot of time on this, but we just got this back from the coastal commission, their comments. You know, do we have enough time to vet what they've sort of sent back to the county over and above what the staff has vetted so far?
Through the chair supervisor, I haven't confirmed this, but we agendized this item for our March hearing this last March and continued it at the request of the county to the August hearing because we thought that was the logical target for us in San Francisco. We could also reschedule that or target a different hearing within the year of that March timeline. So we are going to be back in San Francisco in December, for example. We've been trying to push it forward and work with the county in terms of scheduling, but I believe we could do that if that was the board's desire.
I think we're just looking to know what our options are, really. We may be ready July 7th. I just wanted to know if that was like a real drop dead date.
Okay, other questions, comments? Supervisor Gordon?
Just one comment. I would like staff to take a look at the buildout numbers as it relates to the Witten-Abernathy court decisions. I'd like to better understand, kind of, and we discussed this on July 7th, how those may impact the proposed buildout numbers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do you have another comment? Supervisor Tissier?
Just one comment that was raised by the Farm Bureau, the fact that some of the recommendations are in the recommendation, we were talking about potentially eliminating adding any new special districts, yet there may be a need that we're unaware of. And I wonder if we might explore if there's any other groups out there that have been spending, as I think Mr. Olson said, up to five years looking at an irrigation district to make sure that agriculture stays healthy here on the community. And I wouldn't want us to find that we take some action that would be a detriment to our community and to our agriculture community as well. So I'd certainly like to see where they are in that process and whether that's a smart move for us to do.
Okay, well, I want to thank the public for being here this evening. Your input is important to us and we will certainly take it into consideration as we continue to work this issue through. I want to thank the city of Half Moon Bay for hosting us this evening. It's a real pleasure to be out here and to see all of you. And obviously, this is a community that is very concerned and we do appreciate that. We have worked long and hard on this issue over the years, many, many meetings. I think probably 20 meetings in all. I thought that we had a pretty good buy-in from the community overall with what we had adopted, but we have some other suggestions from the coastal commission and I think we're open to your input as well. And we're going to seriously consider everything that you have to say. So we're going to take this up again on July 7th. And Supervisor Gordon has another comment.
I apologize. I know you were trying to wrap up. I just want to make sure that for the record, we did receive today a letter from Bijon Sertipi, District 4, Caltrans. And I know Stephen Galvez from Caltrans has been here in the audience listening, but I want to make sure that that letter is included in the record. I apologize.
Okay, that will be included in the record and as will the other letters that were presented this evening. So again, thank you all for being here and we look forward to continuing to work with you on this important issue. This meeting stands adjourned.